This, the January 20th, 2021 recess session of the NAGC head board of commissioners is hereby called to order. There is no pledge today, since this is a recessed session. But I do want to follow yesterday's day of remembrance with a period of silence to remember the more than 400,000 people who have died of COVID-19 in the United States, including those in our own community. So if you will join me in sharing a few moments of silence. And now the next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda and a motion would be in order.
Mayor, I make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
A second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Carolyn, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Brinkley, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Aye.
Commissioner Renee Cahoon?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sears?
Aye.
Mayor Cahoon?
Aye. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is public comment, and I'll ask the clerk if we have a public comment today.
There are none today.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda, which you have before you, and a motion would be in order.
This is Renee, so moved to adopt as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda as presented. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Brinkley, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Aye.
Commissioner Renee Cahoon?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sears?
Aye.
And Mayor Cahoon?
Aye.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is old business. Item E1 is consideration of the Volkswagen segment, and I'll call on Michael.
Good morning. At the board's January 6th meeting, the board should recall that there were some questions to staff regarding the fees and the charging of fees for credit card fees, primarily for the public use of a charger and how those fees were collected. And I think what I learned is, I think there are various ways that those fees may be assessed and collected depending on the vendor, but primarily depending on the equipment. It seems as though perhaps the two vendors for the equipment that have maybe been around the longest, that are the most well-established, that are options to us, that they handle the collection of those fees. And they do that through charging either a 7% or 10% on the fees that we collect. So I kind of laid that out for the board in terms of what costs we may be looking at associated with that. But generally, for every dollar, it would be that there would be some portion of that that would be retained by the vendor, and the town would receive the remaining portion. So most communities are setting the fee to cover the cost of the electricity. And I provided you with the rates from Dominion that are applicable to us. And so I'll set the cost of the electricity, but also to be consistent with the cost of fuel as well. Most communities want to make sure that there's a balance there, is what I've understood, that you don't want to be in a situation where the fee that you're charging for use of the charger is essentially the equivalent or more expensive than it would be to purchase fuel. I did provide a best management practice for charging fees from one of those vendors. You know, they are indicating that, I believe, the average cost of electricity is, I believe, 45 cents per kilowatt hour. Hours is going to be slightly higher than that. So generally, as I indicated, an hour charge is going to be 6.6 kilowatts. That's going to cost us 62 cents in electricity costs from June through September, and 57 cents from October through May. Assuming we were going with a system that charged 10% per transaction, the return on the $1.85 per hour charge, if we're going with a $1.85, which is what Hatteras charges for their charger, or the charger at the Hatteras Ferry Terminal is the fee. To account for electricity costs, we would see a return of no less than $1.4 or $1.9, depending on the month where that was being collected. I did want to clarify. I did misunderstand. The reimbursement available is actually 5,000 per charging port. And you can certainly get a port or a charger that has a single port. Most of them come with dual ports, so potentially per charger, we could see a reimbursement of $10,000 for this. So based on that, the cost, the actual expected cost to the town would be between $1,000 and $5,000 after we purchased the equipment. And part of this would be that the town extends the electrical service to increase a platform for that charger. We expect the total cost to do that would be $15,000, not to exceed that amount. And again, with a potential $10,000 reimbursement. The program opens up on January 25th. We expect it will be fairly competitive. And it may be that if we don't submit an application early on, then those monies may be unavailable to us. I did find out about an alternative that I laid out in my memo to the board. There is a company, and I'm sure there may be others, that have a different program where we wouldn't be purchasing the equipment. Under the, to be eligible for the reimbursement program, we would essentially be purchasing the equipment. We would own the equipment. We are obligated, when we do that, to have a five-year warranty on parts and labor. But it does do wonder, after that five years, what are we in for in terms of owning that equipment, continuing to maintain it, potentially needing to replace it? There are companies out there, at least one company out there, that has two alternatives, which one would be a subscription option, and the other is, they refer to as a hybrid option. And the subscription option doesn't really save us anything. It wouldn't necessarily be an alternative. You don't own the equipment. You're essentially leasing the equipment at $99 per month. That totals up over five years to $11,880, which is probably more than we would be paying for this, for the equipment eligible for the reimbursement program, but we wouldn't be eligible for the reimbursement. Their other option is this hybrid service where we are essentially hosting a charger. We're allowing a charger to be located on town property. We don't pay anything for the equipment. We don't pay anything monthly. We would need to pay to do the installation, so you'd be looking at between $4,000 and $5,000, we believe, to do the extension of the electrical service and the installation of a pad. The the problems or perhaps issues with that is, we wouldn't be setting the fee for the charge. We would receive revenue. We would see, receive 40% of the revenue, and they would cover all electricity costs for that charger. If the town were to purchase an electric vehicle to use on that charger, or to use that charger to charge, we would have to pay that hourly rate to charge that vehicle. But we would be getting 40% of that revenue and the electricity cost back to us. So there would be a cost for us to do that under that type of program that we wouldn't necessarily have under a purchase program, under the reimbursement-eligible program. But given that this is something that maybe we would be dipping our toe into to test the water, I don't know that that hybrid option is potentially not a good option for us, because we don't own the equipment. We're not obligated to maintain it and operate it and service it, especially beyond the five years. And we do still receive some revenue associated with that. And we can, we can see how, you know, it progresses and it works, and whether or not it's a benefit to the town and the town's visitors. So happy to try to address any questions that the board has.
I'll open it up for board questions. That hybrid option was attractive to me when I saw it. But let's, let's go forward and do this alphabetically. Kevin, do you have any questions or observations?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Cahoon?
Y'all mute.
Renee, unmute yourself, Renee.
Sorry, I'm unmuted at the wrong place. I like the last option, where we would receive some of the revenue, and somebody else would be responsible for the care and maintenance of the equipment.
Right. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Fuller?
I agree with Commissioner Cahoon.
Thank you. Commissioner Sears?
I agree with the other commissioners. My question is, are we trying to make a profit on this, or are we just trying to add another service to the public? And to ourselves if we get our electric car?
Michael, would you address that? In my mind, that really appears to be a service to the public.
Yeah, I don't, I don't anticipate that this would be much in the way of a revenue generator. I think it would be, I think, I think we would probably be unsatisfied if that was the goal. I think, you know, we, as part of our work plan, and it was a recommendation from the planning board, that we work on a, an electric vehicle action plan. So that's why we were interested in this opportunity as a way to better locate, you know, prepare, plan for the ever-increasing demand for electric vehicles. And I think if we can find locations on town property that suitable for the town, but, you know, supports our residents and visitors, I think it's a good amenity. And if it doesn't cost us necessarily anything significant cost, I think that's a win-win. And if that's the model that the board would like us to pursue, I would say we don't necessarily need to determine a location now. I think we could work with this vendor and come back to the board even with their kind of guidance and thoughts on where this could be located. Not the town hall or over by the border wouldn't be the best location. We would still, and we wouldn't need to do it now either, but we would probably still need to have a budget amendment or some funding available for for the installation or extension of the electrical service. But again, you wouldn't need to decide on that today either.
So, Michael, the initial question before us, and it was time-sensitive, was whether we needed to apply for the grant. If we're pursuing this hybrid alternative, then it's my understanding we would not need to apply, because we would not be eligible. And so I think that, that question seems to be resolved. Maybe I will ask the board to vote on whether we should go ahead with. But, but just to clarify with you, with the board's expression of interest in this hybrid alternative, we would not pursue this matching grant at this time?
That's correct. Yes.
I will ask the board, in order to make sure that this is done, since we are in a remote meeting, make sure this is formally and communication is clear that if we'll make a motion on whether to proceed with the grant application and then vote on that, I think that'll settle this issue. So a motion would be.
Mayor, one question before we make a motion. Long-term, are we better off going for the grant and having that situation, or are we long-term the other way?
I mean, from my perspective, I would say that there I don't, I wouldn't bet on this, but I would say, I would guess that there will be other funding opportunities that could support something like this in the future. You know, I don't think that, I would be more concerned about the long-term costs and obligations in owning this equipment more so than potentially this hybrid option, this partnership option. I think, you know, yes, we, we own a fuel dispensing system. And I think you all probably are aware of the complications with that over the years and the amount of maintenance that it takes, and this may or may not be unlike that. And I think, again, I think to test the waters, I think this is a good option compared to pursuing the reimbursement program.
All right. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Does the board wish to take action to direct staff not to proceed with the grant, or can we, can we do that informally?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, if you need one, that we proceed, that we do not proceed with the with the grant application, but we proceed with the hybrid model that was presented by Michael Zaner.
Second.
If you need a motion.
Thank you. I have a motion from Commissioner Brinkley, a second from Commissioner Sears. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Brinkley, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Aye.
Commissioner Renee Cahoon?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sears?
Aye.
Mayor Cahoon?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is item E2, consideration of board of adjustment appointments. And at that last meeting, we were not prepared to appoint a vice chair, which is our responsibility. You have a memo before you that states that Board of Adjustment member Bobby Gentry would like to be reappointed, and is also interested in serving as vice chair, and that John Mascara has expressed interest in being appointed as vice chair. So what is, what is the board's wish on this?
Are you ready for a motion?
Yes, sir. We can start with that.
Make, I would make a motion that we reappoint Bobby Gentry to another term, and also appoint him vice chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Brinkley and a second from Commissioner Cahoon. Madam Clerk, you call, oh, I'm sorry. I'm skipping discussion. I'm jumping right to the clerk. Is there any discussion on the side? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, if you will please call the roll.
Commissioner Brinkley, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller, your vote?
I think that's a hand up. There we go.
Commissioner Renee Cahoon?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sears?
Aye.
Mayor Cahoon?
Aye.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is our discussion with developmental associates. Greg, do you know if they're ready? And if they're not, we can go to the.
I don't know if they're ready yet. Let me, I'll check with them real quick.
Yeah, we're, we're a little early. So let's, if we may, while we're waiting, to find out if they are ready. Let's go to item G, items referred to in presentations from the town attorney. Mr. Leidy?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have nothing to present today.
Thank you. Greg, if you can multitask.
I'm trying.
I would ask if you have any items or presentations from the town manager.
Couple of items, your mayor. First, we had some discussion, staff meeting yesterday, about fireworks, for 4th of July fireworks. Knowing that we're, that's kind of a time-sensitive issue, that if we're going to make a decision to have fireworks for this 4th of July, we, we need to make that decision fairly quickly. So really, just wanted to kind of see where the board is at. I know, of course, it certainly canceled because of the pandemic this last time. And it's, at this point, it's hard to know just where we're going to be at come the 1st of July. So it's, it's, but it, so it's kind of a difficult decision from a time-sensitive standpoint. I haven't, I haven't been here to witness what a 4th of July fireworks is like in NAGC. But I assume we end up with a very busy time, just knowing what, what the normal traffic was like on the 4th of July. So whether or not we could hold that in some type of a socially-distanced manner, I'm, I'm not sure yet what that, what that would look like.
Well, it's hard, it is hard to judge, and it would be difficult or impossible to police, you know, if you tried to do this in a socially-distanced manner. I know that Killable Hills did fireworks on the date of the first light celebration. But, but that's a winter day, and is out of season, and is a different condition, where you can sort of expect that people would stay apart and perhaps watch from their cars. The other thing is that the rollout of the vaccine, at this point, is a state-by-state exercise, and we'll have visitors from all over the place. And we, we, we can't judge by what's happening here as to whether most of those visitors would have been vaccinated or not. I guess we can be optimistic about the 4th of July and have a reasonable expectation that most folks would have been vaccinated by that point. But I'll ask the, I'll ask the board. I'll start with Commissioner Fuller has his hand up, I think.
Well, I was just kind of getting ready. All I can say is, as far as the season, what I do know is we can't have probably any more people than we had this past summer. But bookings are moving at about 20% faster this year than they were last year at this time. So, you know, that doesn't mean there's an increase in number of people. It just means that the bookings are booking up quicker. So I expect this coming season to be an extremely busy one. Now, I don't know if that speaks to the goodness or badness of fireworks, but I think the fireworks are a tradition. And I, for one, think we should plan for the fireworks. And then also have a clause, if possible, that we can get out of it at a certain period of time, a reasonable time. But, but I'd like to plan for fireworks. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sears?
I would agree with Webb, but I would like to know the date that we can terminate that fireworks activity. Like last year, we had a date set that we had to notify them by. I would like to know that date before moving to not do it this year.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Cahoon?
I agree with both Deb and Mike. I would like to see the date by which we have certain, whether it's 30 days out, 60 days out, something like that, have some sort of idea. Maybe by then we'll have a better handle on how the vaccine's working, hopefully. Effective today, we'll have a much better rollout and more vaccines being presented.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Brinkley?
I agree that we should plan for the fireworks. I think it is important, though, like the other commissioner said, to know the date that we can get out of that without being charged, just like we did with last year's. But I do think we should proceed if it's through a grant that we usually get for the Visitors Bureau or arranging a contract with a fireworks company, that we should go ahead and proceed with that.
Great. Thank you. Greg, it sounds, I agree. It sounds like the guidance is that we should proceed. Can you get your hands on that date and share that with the board? Is this perhaps share with the board before January meeting, or, I'm sorry, or next month's meeting?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay. And then we can, it sounds like the guidance is that we proceed as long as we are protected with adequate time to get out of the contract, depending on how things are going. And we'll affirm that at the next meeting, subject to that date.
Very good. Next thing I have is, is we've been trying to get ready for this study session on beach nourishment funding and getting information out to the board. I think certainly, as the commission knows, deputy town manager Andy Garman has been kind of leading that effort. David Ryan and Amy Miller have been working with them, as well as our consultants. And, and Andy has, you know, really been pretty out of pocket for the last, you know, week and a half now. So this point, we're just not sure if we're going to be ready to go this next week, or depend on how, how soon he's, he recovers.
Well, I mean, it's, I know the board has interest in us getting this, getting this done. And, and I think that we would like to proceed as early as, as early as possible. If you can, you can. If you can't, you can't. But the board's preference, I believe, and commissioners can speak up if they, if they disagree, but it's the board's interest to get this done as soon as possible. And I think if we could do it in a week, we'd like to do that.
Right. I, I'm just concerned whether or not we can be ready to go for this next week, particularly get the information out to you. I'd feel more comfortable putting it on the, with the February 3rd agenda, just to make sure we, we get all that information to you well in advance.
Yes, Renee?
Mayor, I'm out of pocket on February 3rd. I had made my arrangements based on trying to have something in January. And I agree, Andy's out of pocket, but I thought most of the information was pretty well-prepared already.
Right. And a lot of, I think what I've understood are questions to be will be about the impact of service districts. And those are numbers based on property values that I'm not sure. I won't speak for Amy, but it seems as though that those alternatives that we talked about, looking at and what those numbers would be, don't necessarily depend on Andy.
I believe Amy might be on the call. She can maybe address that.
Good morning. We've been working with our consultants, and I'm sorry if my window's a little bright. We've been working with the financial consultants over the past few weeks. We have some numbers as far as different options for different projects. And we got some answers from FEMA that we were waiting on, which is kind of another holdup. So we have some numbers as far as what the project will cost. You know, in different scenarios, as far as just a FEMA project, or, you know, asking Dare County for funds and contributing our own. So we can certainly have those ready for next week.
We've talked also, and Renee, you can clarify for me, or one of the other commissioners can clarify for me. We've also talked about if we considered alternative service districts, looking at those and being able to project what the revenue picture would be from those if we establish them. Would you be able to do that as well?
I believe we have some of that information from last year around this time when we started talking about this. And we would just need to update those with the new valuations.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mayor, may I, may I say one thing? If we do it next week, which I favor doing it next week, please get us the information in time before next week. If we do it next week, which I favor doing it next week, please get us the information in time before next week. One, and then two, I'm going to have to leave next week by noon. So if we have a meeting, I will be leaving that meeting by noon.
Thank you. Kevin or Mike, Commissioner Sears, anything to add?
No, I agree. If we can do it next week, we should do it next week.
The sooner the better for me. And in getting the information so we can review it and fully understand it, I think is going to be paramount, at least for me.
Greg, I, I would suggest if perhaps a human's effort to get a package to in our hands by the end of Friday. And if that simply turns out not to be possible, it turns out not to be possible. But at this point, hearing the board's urgency to, to move on with this and the extent to which Amy may have some of that information in hand, that, that's what I'm hearing from the board.
We are hearing that as well, Mayor. We will do that.
Thank you, Greg. Do you have anything else?
No, I do not.
Okay, I see that our guest is with us. If the board is willing, we will move back up to item F, which is the discussion with developmental associates. Hearing no objection, that's what we'll do. So welcome, welcome to our meeting.
Thank you, sir. Should I go ahead and get going?
If, if you would, and if you will frame our discussion for today.
Okay. I have two components that I'd like to work through with you all. One is I'd like to walk you through our process briefly. You've just heard it, so I won't go into great detail unless you have any questions. And go ahead and set dates for each step of the process. So we know when you'll be meeting and you'll have a, an understanding of how long the, the whole process will take. So that's one thing I'd like to do. And the other is as manager Sparks has set up, we, I've had sessions with him and with staff. I've gotten their input about the position and would love to get input from the board as well. So those are the two items I have, laying out the process and getting your input. And I'm glad to go in either order that you all would like to proceed.
Well, let's, um, let's hear the process because there may be questions.
That sounds great. I'm going to pull up the, our proposal on our, on the shared screen. And that had the steps in the process. Can everybody see that? Is that large enough for everyone? Is that all right? Need to make it larger.
I'll ask commissioners, depends on what kind of device you're looking at as to whether that's going to be big enough for you to see.
Please let me know if you need it larger. Anyone?
I can see it.
Looks okay?
Got it.
Let me just make it a little bit larger. There we go. How's that?
That's, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Okay, good. All right. So I just want to make sure we're okay here with our first step. I propose to get input from the department directors. I've also gotten input from Greg. Would get input from you all today. All that information is fundamental to our design of the entire process. How we set up the recruitment, what we're looking for in recruitment, what we're looking for in screening, what we're looking for in terms of the assessment of candidates. Is there any other group that I should be reaching out to that you all would like for me to pursue? Are we good to go?
Board, I'm not, I'm not hearing any response from the board in terms of expanding that. Now, we, we have not identified those community leaders yet, and so that's something the board needs to tackle. May, maybe offline by submitting a, a list of names or if you have some other mechanism for doing that. I think that we could submit a list of name, our own list of names, many of which will overlap, but we could submit those to the manager.
That would, that would be absolutely fine and I'd be glad to set up a session or two with those folks. I'd be glad to do that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. You proceed.
All right. So assuming you're, you're okay with with the input at this point, sufficing to go ahead and put together a job ad. I think we could have a proposed job ad to you all by next Monday, the 25th. And we would need the feedback from the board in terms of any tweaking of that. And if, I don't know how long it would take you all to do so. Let me just ask you. So what we normally do is just send it out to the board as a whole. Ask each member to provide us with any feedback. We take all that, pull it together and finalize the job ad. So if, if we got it to you all by, say, no later than close of business on Monday, when do you all think you could provide us with that feedback?
I'll suggest the close of business on Friday.
Okay. All right. So that would be fine. And then we can finalize the job ad and begin recruitment and posting on February the first. So by the way, I'm going to be making some changes on this as we, as we go. And then I'll send it to you all so you have all these dates as well. All right, good. So then we would recruit throughout the month of February. And remember, we'll be using several methods. We'll be reaching out to individuals. We'll be obviously posting on key professional websites. We'll follow up with some listservs. We'll use social media as well. And then in early March, we would need to set up a closed session with the board. We would send you the, the applications, resumes and our analysis of each of the candidates. Remember, we'll have a spreadsheet for you all. We could send that to you by as early as Monday, the first. And then we would, you would need a couple of days obviously to look over the information and then we could set up a, an executive session with you all to go over those results. And what we would ask you to do during this initial screening meeting is to reduce the number of candidates down to no more than 15. And those folks would then go through a secondary screening process that I'll come back and describe in just a moment. So what's, what's your pleasure with regard to that? Again, we could meet as early as probably the third of March would probably be the earliest we could do it. But if you need more time than that, that's also fine with us.
Steve and Mayor, if I may, this is Webb. One, one point or question is when we do the ad, which I'm assuming will start in the beginning of February, I hope that we're posting a hiring rate of pay or compensation along with that. And that's a discussion that we've not had.
I'm, I'm proposing we would talk about that today. But when I get your input on the position, I would, I would want to to at least make some progress in terms of that. And we definitely need to have it finalized for the job ad.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Steve, you can proceed.
Okay. So again, we can have the results to you as early as March 1st. Don't know how that fits with your meeting schedule, but what we would need to find out from you all, Mayor, is what would be a reasonable date to set up a closed session with you all to review applications? Again, it's closed because your applicant names would become open to you. The, usually these sessions take about an hour and a half.
It strikes me that receiving the information on the first and having a meaningful discussion on the third is not is a little short. Can't look at my March calendar right now because it's on my phone, which is serving as my camera. But I believe that we have another workshop or meeting scheduled in March. Is that, Greg, can you tell me if that's correct?
March the 24th at 9:00 AM, a capital improvement program workshop.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. So March the 24th is a possibility. Unless the board wants to have a session just for this purpose somewhere in between the third
Mayor, if you're targeting the 24th, let me just toss this out for your consideration as well, which is we typically hold our second screen. Now, again, I'm talking right now about our first. We typically hold a secondary screen about two weeks after the first screen. And I'm wondering if you might want to think about the 24th for your second screen and perhaps schedule something, you know, what we could, could do, just as an example, is to give you plenty of time to review the applications, we could meet the week of March 8th. Do our initial screen and then come back to you on the 24th for the secondary screen. These are step four and five on your screen.
I'm, I'm willing. Board, I'll, I'll, let me, let me call on you one by one. Commissioner Cahoon?
That works for me.
Okay, to add an extra meeting in there in that week of the eighth?
Uh, yes, currently it looks like that's okay.
Okay. Commissioner Brinkley?
Yes, as long as it's not on the eighth. It could be after the eighth. I would be good.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sears?
I would be available that week as well.
And Commissioner Fuller?
I have no clue, but I'll try.
All right. So, so yes, let's firm up that date. Let's, let's tentatively set it for that, that Wednesday morning.
The 10th, all right. Is there a particular time? We can go ahead and lock that in as well.
If 9:00 AM works for folks, it gets it out of the, gets it out of the way.
Works for me.
That works for me. All right, good. And then, so we'll, we'll get the information to you a week ahead of time. Would that be sufficient, Mayor, for you to review? We might be able to extend our recruitment an extra day or two as a result, and then maybe get it to you on the third.
So that, this information will be a, I'm sorry. So this is our initial set of information?
Yes, sir. It'll include applications. You'll, you'll have links to applications and resumes. You'll also have our analysis of all the candidates, including Google searches and links to any Googled information that we've come up with.
Yeah, it would be not, not later than the third.
Okay, we can definitely make sure you have it by the third for sure. Give you a full week to review. Okay. And then we can meet again, like I said, on the 24th. During that time, with your up to 15 candidates, we would have all of them go through a structured telephone, sorry, structured Zoom interview. Keep forgetting we're in the pandemic age. And we would have them answer some short essay questions, take the emotional intelligence inventory, have all that information to you. Again, now it's down to 15 candidates and what we would provide you at that point is a narrative and scoring on their Zoom interviews and the results on their essay questions and an overview of their results on the emotional intelligence inventory. We could have that to you again ahead of time for your review and meet with you on the 24th as, as you had originally proposed. And again, we would probably need an hour to an hour and a half for that session.
Could, could we have that at, at least a week in advance as well?
I don't think I could get that to you a week in advance. I could get it to you because it takes us quite a while to structure, set up those interviews and conduct them and so forth. I don't see why we couldn't have them to you by the 19th. Give it to you Friday. You have it over the weekend in the first of that week. That works for you.
Well, I think we can, we can make that work. I'll ask the board if they have any objection to that.
No objection from me.
None for me.
I, I have no clue.
So what should we do? Since Commissioner Fuller is not sure.
Well, I, I, I think that we're going to have to, it, it seems prudent because it, it sounds like you're heading toward a sort of a, a lining this up on the schedule that we'd originally asked you for. And it seems as though this needs to move, move a pace. I, I think we'll just have to understand we're putting these dates on the calendar and we'll have to be flexible. If someone gets, if we get close to that date and we have enough conflict that board members can't attend, then we'll, we'll have to make an adjustment. But I think it's prudent to put them on the calendar for now because this needs to move.
Okay. Is there a particular time on the 24th you'd like to propose at this point?
Everyone seems to like nine o'clock. It seems to work and unless you, unless somebody already has one on their calendar. And, and we know that, that you know, all of us don't have things calendared that quite this far in advance or have access to that calendar right now. So.
Okay. All right. Good. All right. So we'll, we'll shoot for that at this particular juncture. And then as I explained to you during our presentation, we'll, we would design assessment center exercises, again, simulate what we learn or the key challenges in the job and the key competencies that we're looking for. We, the other thing that I mentioned to you, and this is something we, we should probably, it'd be great to get a feel from the board on this issue as well. If you recall, we would have four exercises, three or four assessors per exercise. We normally focus on primarily getting assessors who are other managers or from similar size in similarly located jurisdictions. We also might get assistant managers from larger jurisdictions, HR directors, maybe on occasion a department director or two from other jurisdictions. Again, this is done totally virtually so they can frankly be from anywhere and participate in the process. In total, we typically recruit about 13 to 14 assessors. We can involve community members if you'd like, or we can or we can simply stick to bringing in our external professionals. Would be good to get a feel from you all about whom those folks should be that you'd like to include as assessors.
Well, until we've sort of submitted our names, I I'm not sure that we can. We certainly today can't answer your question about who we would have from the community to be part of that assessment team. And I I think he it's it seems like an appropriate step, but it's a sensitive choice. I would guess the the board would not until we saw the full roster and could probably identify somebody that had been common to all of us that we had respect for. Who might be a candidate for that? So perhaps we hold that slot open at this point.
Okay, we could have up to four or five community members if you'd like. So I'm sorry. So if you want to be thinking about that, that would be great. And I can recruit other external folks to be assessors. So I could I could recruit, say, 10 or so folks and then wait to hear from you all. And if you have four or five community folks, we'd be delighted to include them as well. It's they do you do need to know it's a full two day commitment. So it's not one of those things where folks can kind of come in for a little bit and leave, they really have to commit to a two day process.
Understood.
Okay, does that sound okay, though, in general, that we would recruit the majority of assessors? And that if you all would like to add in some community members, we can do that as well.
This this is Webb. When you recruit your people, I would like to suggest that you, as much as possible, find either an ex-manager or a current manager that has some understanding of what it takes to be a manager along the coast of Carolina. And I I would reach out to maybe an ex-manager if you could, that that's been a coastal manager, particularly in the Northeast, which there aren't a lot of, but there are some.
Okay, yeah, I'll be glad to do that. In fact, that's that'll be my initial thrust is to try to get folks that are coastal managers. Just off the top of my head, when we ran the process in Duck, I think we had at least six or seven folks that were on the coast who were helped as assessors. So I don't see any problem with us doing that.
Thanks a lot.
Okay. All right, and so then we would be ready to run the process about two weeks after the 24th. So and we always shoot for a Thursday, Friday to run the process because candidates and assessors typically have board meetings early in the week. And so we want to avoid those kinds of commitments. So the logical dates would be let me just double check on my calendar real quick. Hold on, I'll be right back. Would be April 8th and 9th to run the process. And what that would mean from your perspective would be that it would be great if 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 those dates work for you all. What we would want is frankly, the only real time commitment that you all would have would be mid afternoon on the 9th, that Friday. We'd love to have the mayor come in and welcome the assessors when they start training on the morning of the 8th. We train them all morning and then, starting that afternoon, they begin assessing candidates. Again, can assess up to five to that afternoon, three the next to the next morning and one at 1:00 on Friday afternoon. We would be ready to start sharing results and begin our debrief with you all at 2:30 on Friday and again, in this case, on April the 9th. So again, that would also obviously be a closed session. So does that work for you all to do the 8th, 9th of April?
That week, this is Webb, that week is usually a week a lot of people are gone. Just to throw that out.
Okay, because of the Easter holiday?
Yeah, that's a crazy busy week down here is what.
Okay.
I'm not I'm not having a problem with that. I just want to point out when we're looking at our calendars and and a lot of that tends to be, as as Commissioner Coon said, we have a lot of people here. And two, we have a lot of people that are here that leave because they're out of school, although I guess everybody's out of school.
Yeah, and so if you'd want to put it off a couple more week, another week, we could do that. I will tell you, one one concern that we have had during COVID is we see candidates moving quickly. And we hate extending anything after the initial screen too much because we fear losing candidate, good candidates. But if if the 8th and 9th doesn't work for you all, we could go into the next Thursday, Friday.
It works for me. I was just making a point for other people, just in case, you know. But but it's fine for me.
And again, your time commitment would be 2:30 to 5:00 on the 9th, basically. If if that day works for you all.
Commissioners, I'll ask any any objection. Commissioner Kahoon?
I may have a hard time on the 9th in the afternoon with it being a holiday week and there is no labor force here right now.
Right, and yes, that that's still early. Steve, maybe maybe we should jump to the following week.
Okay, sure, 15th and 16th then, okay.
I don't mind doing it the following Monday, Tuesday.
I I just I think we'd have a hard time getting commitments from candidates and assessors to do Monday, Tuesday. Because so many of them have board meetings Monday or Tuesday evening. Particularly, I think it has to be a Thursday, Friday. We've tried and it just doesn't work. So is that okay, the 15th and 16th then? Does does that work okay?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, I'm not hearing objections, Steve, so.
Okay, all right, so I'll put that in. And one more thing, again, you may not necessarily want to commit to this right away. But as I said, we always worry about losing good candidates if there's any delay in the process. One more commitment that you all might want to think about, particularly now that we've we've got a couple of months' notice, is bringing in your I don't know if you want to have your top two or three candidates come to Nag's Head and you can meet them in person or whether you would be comfortable interviewing them virtually. But if you're thinking of bringing them to Nag's Head, it might be helpful if you committed a couple of days the next week for candidate interviews and visits. So that again, if if you wait till the 15th and 16th to set that up, you all may have commitments and may have a hard time getting it scheduled quickly. And again, we may lose candidates. So normally, what we find coming out of our process is the the board likes, wants to talk to two or three folks that come out of the process. Most often, still today, that's done in person. But again, there's no requirement of that being the case. It could still be done virtually. But you may want to think about locking in some days, particularly later that next week, for candidate final interviews, whether it's done in person or virtually.
Thank you. I'll say for myself before asking the board, it's it's a big hire and I would be incredibly reluctant to do it without laying eyes on the person and being able to have a little bit of time with them. I'm more than willing to block out the time necessary, especially if we are I I am hoping that we will have in that final list a few candidates that we're very excited about. I mean, it would be disappointed, be disappointing if we didn't and expecting that we will have a handful of candidates we're very excited about. You know, I'd be more than happy to set the time aside. And and I'll ask other board members if if they're of the same mind about wanting to see this person in person.
I agree with you, Mayor.
I'm not going to vote for anybody that I haven't met in person.
I agree with in-person meetings.
Definitely have to have in person.
All right, so let's let's tentatively block out. And I I don't know if we need to put a day, the week of the 19th. I think at this point, unless somebody's going on vacation and knows it, I think we just say that, you know, at some point during that week, we'll have candidates here.
That would be great. And and do keep in mind, too, and we can help you think this through a little bit more as we get closer to the date. This is also a time when you want to help sell the community and the organization with the candidates. We're going to be putting them through a lot of paces where they're being assessed. And particularly at that point, it's going to be important for you all to make sure that they have any of their questions answered about things like schools and living situations and so on and so forth. So I think it's more than just an interview. It's also an opportunity to sell the community and the organization.
All right, thank you.
Good, and very often, if they have families, they want to bring their family as part of that, too.
So that leads, depending on their schedule, I mean, this leads, you correct me if I'm wrong, this leads to a May hire and a June start?
I think that's correct, yes. If you assume they have a give you a 30 day, give their current employer a 30 days' notice, I think you could expect, I I think that's exactly right. You keep one other factor that we haven't discussed is background investigation on your top candidate. That can take up to two weeks. So you all could be ready to make your decision end of April, 1st of May. Couple of weeks for a back intensive background investigation. So no later, hopefully, than mid-May. And then they could be ready to start in June.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions from anyone or concerns about the process before I shift gears and start asking you some questions about what you're looking for in the manager? Okay, great. Well, I'm going to pull up another document so I can type while you all are speaking. The the question I always like to start off with is, you know, main is again, and we've sent you this, these questions ahead of time, so you've had a chance to think about them. But I'm not quite as interested initially in the key competencies you're looking for as I am interested in knowing what the key challenges are that you see facing the next Nag's Head manager. Challenges can be, you might think about them, you know, negatively. Here's some things that have to be fixed. You might think about them as opportunities that could be taken advantage of. My my suggestion is think about this very broadly. These could be internal issues like, you know, turnover, technology, so on and so forth. That could be external issues like economic development. I'm sure I'll hear about beach nourishment, you know, those kinds of things. So whether it's internal or external, and by the way, even if you want to look in your crystal balls, what you might anticipate the next two to three years as key challenges, any of that of those kinds of concerns or opportunities would be great to hear about. And the other thing I always like to do is just encourage a discussion. I may jump in and ask some questions to get a little bit more detail. But if you are, if I could just throw that open for the council to discuss, that would be really helpful. So what you see is the key challenges facing the next manager.
This is Webb, before we go any further, did we lose Renee?
Here's what I have. Karen, if you're listening, I think you are. Do you reach out to Renee, see if she's having a technical problem?
Yes, this is Karen. I had heard from Carolyn earlier that Renee was having some power issues which she was able to overcome. But I will check with Carolyn if you've heard again from Renee, if Carolyn is also available.
Karen, I haven't heard anything.
But you did hear earlier she had had an electrical power issue.
Right, yeah, I'll give her a quick call right now.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Carolyn.
Should we take a break and wait on? Wait on Renee?
Sure.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's take about five minutes and do whatever anybody needs to do and we'll be right back.
Okay, well, and you asked me to repeat the question, which is, what do you see as the biggest challenges facing the next Nag's Head town manager? Again, challenges or opportunities? Could they be inside the organization? These could be external, involving the public or infrastructure or beach re-nourishment, those kinds of things. And it can also be any issues you you anticipate, maybe next two or three years down the road. So I'll just say that and throw it open.
Okay, well, I'll let me let me go alphabetically. Commissioner Brinkley?
Thank you, Mayor. Just obviously my opinion, we've had a lot of turnover at the department head level and management level over the last several years. And I think it's important to to not lose what has been important to the town for for many years. Bringing in new people is great, I'm all I'm all for change. But we need to make sure that what has been the values and and important to the town for many years is relayed and and that does not get lost in the in the transition of employees. I think beach nourishment is going to continue to be a thing. We obviously have a funding. We're looking at possible additional MSDs for for beach nourishment. We're in the middle of the master plan. I think that's that's going to be important. Also, Public Works, we're developing a master plan now for needed improvements with Public Works. And then we currently have a waste reduction task force that's working on recycling. Recycling is something that we ended because it was not financially right for the town last last year. Still have a lot of residents that want that. I think that's going to be a conversation that we're going to be to have once the Waste Reduction Task Force gets it some information back. Mayor, that's just what I have for right now.
Okay, all right, thank you, Kevin. Renee? Did we lose Renee again?
No, you haven't lost me again. I see long term funding permitting for beach nourishment, a strong economy versus pay scales and housing, communication and knowledge that we're having so much turnover in housing regarding permitting and town values. And then I also see water capacity as a big issue in the future.
Did you say that last one again, Commissioner Kahoon?
Water capacity of our aquifer, how we move forward with all the building that went on west of us.
Renee, we're getting some feedback from you now. You may have an extra speaker. Renee, we're getting some feedback from you now. You may have an extra speaker turned on that you didn't have before or something. There you go. Thank you.
And those were the main issues that I see coming up as we move forward.
And you said with regard to water capacity, you're looking, you're looking at a particular option with regard to enhancing that?
No, I just think we need to be aware of what our water issues are and stay on top of it because it don't hit us all at one time.
Got it. Thank you.
Commissioner Fuller, we're going around to answer Steve's first question about what are the key issues and challenges first, and then after after polling the commissioners, we could throw the conversation a little more open. So we're on you now.
Okay, and for some reason, my computer blanked out, so I missed most of what Kevin said and some of what, well, I missed Kevin and Renee. It came back on with Renee talking about water. But with with that said, I would say that external, my main concern, first, second, and third is beach nourishment. By far, I mean, if if we can't do beach nourishment, there's no need to even think about anything else. So it's got to be somebody that understands and can help us navigate beach nourishment. And then I tend to get to basically a lot of.
What, you're muted again. I can't hear you.
Webb, if you could hear, we're not getting your audio. He doesn't seem to be hearing us either. Somebody text Webb real quick.
I already texted him, but it looks like he's having a great conversation. Must be good stuff.
Darn it.
He's got a lot to say.
Well, I would have expected that. Like to hear it.
I would love to hear it.
There you go, smiling.
Webb?
He certainly is animated.
Webb, do you hear?
Maybe Dory's all over him.
I don't know.
He sure is jumping up and down a lot.
All right, Karen, I'm going to move to the next commissioner. And if you will try and engage with Webb and see, see if you can figure out what's going on there.
Mayor, I just contacted Webb.
While he's getting, Commissioner Sears, let's go to you while we're waiting to get Webb straight.
Right, I, you know, I'm going to agree with the majority of what everybody else said, and I'm sure Webb one, two, and three points with the beach nourishment and getting a handle on that, especially with the county now coming to us and saying they're going to take some money and and direct it to where they thinks that, since they didn't want to do that before. But also, you know, our employees, some of them are at the point they can be aging out, so we got to have somebody that has a handle on being able to put new employees in a place and keep that that ship steaming forward. We've got budget deficiencies. We don't have enough money for stormwater. We, you know, with the county's recent proposal, we're not going to have enough money down the road unless plans change for the beach nourishment. And we've got to continue those infrastructure goals and stormwater goals, so. And at the same time, I'm sure somewhere in that speech Webb gave, provide the the same level of customer service that the town is used to getting. So I think that's the biggest goal that are the biggest objectives they're going to have to reach.
Thank you. Webb, do we have you back on audio yet?
Mayor Kahoon, I just spoke with Webb. He said he's still trying to get hooked up. He still has no sound.
Okay. So Steve, while we're waiting a few more minutes, try to get Webb back. This is, this is pretty consistent with what you've already heard. A while ago, I had actually sent an email out to the commissioners to ask, you know, just thinking about what our most intractable problems were and those being the ones that needed more thought, creativity, more money, more communication, you know, what what were they? And for, by and large, the commissioners were in agreement with this, and these are not in a particular order. But drainage, which you've heard in particular, and what we do in our most difficult areas like Old Oregon Inlet Road, which is that's a drainage problem that's amplified by a number of issues, including needing DOT participation for that particular problem. And also, it's subject to wind tide in that area and high water table. So we've got some areas where if we're going to continue to deal with stormwater, we've, we have some areas that are especially difficult. Our workforce housing, starting with our own lifeguards, is something that we we recognize to be an issue. The sustainable approach to beach nourishment, including how we finance it and whether there's anything that we can do to improve the life of the south end of the project that's especially erodible. What I called maintaining a high-touch response to all kinds of numerous and persistent issues like, and there are little things. They are, they're the condition of the debris yard. They're about tents on the beach. They're about zoning enforcement. You know, consistent with what our town vision is, and it's, it's it's something that requires, you know, this is something that kind of requires a manager thrust themselves in sort of up to the elbows so that they're constantly maintaining a high standard. I mean, NAGS head thinks a lot of itself. We think we're better than everybody else. We really want to be better than everybody else. And that means getting phone calls returned, getting your trash picked up, you know, getting all the communications you need. Getting the form you need, whatever it is, but that's across the, across the board. And I would put that pretty high on my list. And then this comprehensive, transparent, active maintenance program for all of our infrastructure and our vehicles. And that's something we've been trying to drive toward for for a while. It's starting to move. That's a, that's my list. Webb, do we have you back?
Mayor, I believe Carolyn is trying to assist him right now.
Okay, thank you. We'll give it a minute. Looks like he's doing a hand puppet show or something. Hard to go on with the meeting until we hear what Webb had to say. Steve, do you have any follow-up questions?
Yes, I do. So the the more common question to ask also at this point is what you see as the most critical competencies that you would be looking for in the manager? Obviously, I can glean a lot of that, you know, customer service oriented, being able to have the analytical skills, financial management skills, so on and so forth. But I'm wondering if if the commissioners have any other particular competencies that you think are critical?
Well, before we go into general discussion, let's let's poll again. And I'll continue to do this alphabetically. So Kevin, any particular core competencies that you think we're looking for?
It's the, I mean, the customer service skills that Steve just mentioned, of course, that's that's obvious. The ability to manage and just not administer. And somebody that holds the employees accountable for their actions, knowing that not everything is bad, if that makes sense. It's it's not, it doesn't rise to the level of being extreme. I mean, hold people accountable, it's across the board. That doesn't mean that just serious stuff. Those are just two that I had jotted down real quick, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kahoon?
Thank you. I'm going to echo some of what Kevin said. Would like to have a manager that's got a fair amount of managerial experience. A manager that has high expectations, not of just themselves, but of their employees. Not a micromanager, but aware of the issues and products put out by the town and holding employees accountable for their work product. That's not, say, micromanaging. I'm just saying, expect of employees what you expect of yourself. And I want to pour somebody with some passion for the job.
Right. Okay. Commissioner Sears?
I would agree with both commissioners and add to that, somebody that is adaptable to the situation, can be innovative in a situation, and can come up with a solution that is proactive.
Webb, do we have you back? Webb, do we have you back?
Mayor, he's starting all over again by re-hooking up, so he hopefully will will be back with us soon.
Mayor, I have one more thing.
Sir?
Sorry, go ahead. One other thing about the manager is a good communicator with information going back and forth to the board.
Webb, do we have you back now?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, then I guess I'm back.
Okay.
I guess I left off at beach nourishment, beach nourishment, beach nourishment. So I didn't hear anything after that. So I haven't heard anything that anybody said. So I'm 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 kind of a little bit at a loss. And I don't know where we are in the, in the discussion, sorry.
That that's, we can, we can catch up, but we we didn't hear any of your comments after beach nourishment, beach nourishment, beach nourishment. And you, you had a couple of minutes there of things that were turned to you. So to the extent that you can repeat that, I'd ask you to do that.
Well, basically, what?
And I'd like to emphasize the same level of passion that you apparently had a little while ago, too.
Absolutely. Well, I saw a lot of people, I saw a lot of people laughing at me, which I figured out something must be right or something must be wrong. But the 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 point I was, I was trying to say was, and it gets back to a lot of what I consider the NAGS head character about things. Aesthetics, visual corridors that we maintain. We had a corridor study. The bypass historically looks more naturally oriented instead of commercially sign-oriented. We've taken great strides in trying to maintain a lot of that low-key commercial. But at the same time, promote business and economic development. On the west side, I think our neighborhoods are fine like they are. I don't want to see a lot of progression to create a lot more densities. My issues tend to be things like side yard setbacks and maintaining height requirements. But basically, keeping NAGS head light, NAGS head, but moving forward. I mean, allowing, I mean, innovation needs to occur, and I understand that, but those sorts of values are where are important to me, and I think I need to make sure that they're important to whoever becomes the manager. I guess I could say, I look at when we hired a economic development person as a planning director, I thought that was a disaster. I don't know if y'all remember what I'm talking about or not, but there was a time when we had had Elizabeth as planning director, and I thought she was more about economic development, but be that as it may. Internally, what I'd like to see us do is to continue to work on high-performing organizational type opportunities. I want a manager that is a leader and a manager that is also a manager. And I would like, like I say, work on high-performing organization and where we have a commitment to have staff that's paid basically above average wage. Now, I don't know if y'all have gotten into the talk about the manager per se, but if you want me to do that, will or I'll wait?
We, we, we just did, so jump in on that, too. Competencies you're looking for in the manager.
And, well, basically, I'm looking at a manager who understands efficiency, who's energetic, who has a lot of self-confidence, who's very strong-willed, who's a strategic thinker, who's charismatic and inspiring, and who has a high degree of emotional intelligence. That part may contradict with some of the things I just said, but basically, I think there should be a manager that has a very, that has a very strong personality, and their only deference probably should be to the board and be willing to carry out a board decision. Even though they might not agree, but I would hope that we get a manager that doesn't always agree with the board and is strong enough to tell the board that we're wrong, but willing to do what the board needs. I look to the manager to be sort of the stronger person in what I consider the group of six. You know, the the mayor certainly takes a major leadership role with the board, but we all as board members really have to look to the manager to have his finger on what's going on inside the organization. And to some extent, if the manager is a community-oriented person, to find out what's going on in in the community. So that's it fairly quickly. I want a high degree of trust between the manager and the board, openness, but I'll leave it there.
Great. So my last couple of questions have to do with some of the details for the position. And and I am leading up to the hiring range question. So in terms of any other qualifications, certifications, and so forth, So in terms of any other qualifications, certifications, and so forth, expectations that you all would have, and before you get, let me preface it. I jumped a little bit ahead of myself. We always believe in opening the door as wide as possible to find out who might be interested. We have worked with some boards with all good intentions that have set very high requirements for their next candidate, for their next manager. And as a result, it's been a lot harder to get applicants. And the way we look at it is, it's always better to open the door as widely as possible. That means not going overboard in terms of the requirements you would expect the manager to have achieved before they can be considered for the position. It also means opening up the potential salary range as much as possible to find out who's interested. You can always say no if a candidate's salary expectations are beyond what you'd like. So with that in mind, I'm wondering, and let me just tell you what we typically find that the expectations are in terms of their requirements. Usually, the expectation is obviously they have a bachelor's degree. Masters is preferred, particularly in a relevant field like public administration. Usually, at least three to five years' experience for at least as a department head, if not a manager. Those are usually some of the basic kinds of expectations that we have, that we end up with. But you tell me if you see anything different from that.
This is Webb, can you hear me?
Yeah.
The main thing I would like to echo with Steve is, in my first real job, I was in it for four years, and I never made it to step one because I never met the minimum qualifications for experience, and I never met the minimum qualifications for education. And I was in that, so I was at a minus step one for four years in a job. So if they hadn't have opened it up, the job required a master's and five years' experience. I had neither. And so I do think we can say what we prefer, but I don't think we should say what we require. And I like Steve's numbers, I mean, numbers in terms of, you know, education, experience. I'd like a little bit higher, but so be it.
Steve, if I may, this is Ben. I don't think I weighed in on that last question about core competency. And it plays into this also a little bit. And that is, and I also wonder if it goes all the way back to when you choose your assessors. You know, we do have high expectations. I mean, we want, we want every, we want every call answered. We want every email answered. We want to get out of the truck and pick up trash, we see. We want to spot a, you know, a drainage problem and bring it back to the town and brainstorm solutions. And we want everybody engaged in that because, because again, we think, we think we're better than everybody else, and we want to be better than everybody else. And I'd be interested in a manager who had surprised his community by going above and beyond. It doesn't, you know, there are a lot of communities where you can be a really good competent manager and everybody kind of, the board holds you in kind of high regard, but you're really just kind of steering the ship on the, on the increasing curve that it would naturally take. And I'd like to have somebody who kind of really surprised the community by taking the resources that they had and sort of having some wow factor to it. And if, you know, if you can find some assessors who've sort of spotted that kind of thing or been participants in that kind of thing, you know, that may be helpful, too.
Good.
I realize, again, that costs, that may cost more money, you know, because that's, that's going to be an energetic, kind of driven kind of person, more than likely. But anyway, that's, that's sort of my take on that last question.
Great. Any other comments from board members about requirements for the position?
This is Renee. I think that Webb and Ben have touched on it. I think experience is preferred, more than five years perhaps, but, you know, I'm not going to limit that. More education is better, but as Webb said, he started out by the seat of his pants as well. I'm comfortable with what you had said, Steve.
Okay. Great. Any other thoughts from board members?
Steve, Mike, Mayor Pro Tim. I'd like to see in that somebody with a lot of passion, like Commissioner Cahoon said earlier. I think that would add a lot to it, and I think that's the only way you're going to be able to achieve half of what we're after, as Ben said.
All right, good. Have I missed anybody? Everybody had a chance to add?
Steve, Steve, this is Kevin. I was just going to say, at first, I was thinking more than five years' experience, but certainly can go with three to five years. And I believe the bachelor's degree is more than fine. And, you know, if they have a master's, that's fine, but I don't want to hold anybody back because of that.
Okay, great. Good, excellent. That's good. I'm glad you all see it that way. Again, I think you'll just get a more robust group of candidates this way. That's great. Okay. And the big question, salary or hiring range? Do you have any thoughts about that? I do know what's currently being paid to the interim. I don't have any other information about that, but you're in the low 140s at this point, or, yeah.
This is Webb, if y'all can hear me. I would like to just jump in with the fact that I would like to see Nag's Head, both in terms of personnel as well as salary, be above the norm with, anyway. With that being said, the KDH manager makes 162.5 with minimal externalities other than what everybody else in the town makes, albeit she's been there a while. The one that's a surprise to me is the Duck manager that was just hired. They hired him at 130, although he, as of the last contract I saw, he has still not signed the contract. But it's 130 with regular benefits, and the only addition is like $500 a month of car allowance. And then the standard, oh, and then his retirement starts at the equivalent of, not retirement, but annual leave starts at what a 10-year employee would be. I don't know anybody else's salary range, but I would say personally, I would be looking at around the 155 mark. And we know we had compression with our last manager, and we're getting ready to do a classification and pay plan study, I guess. And I want to make sure that the manager has some degree of distance between them and the assistant manager. So I'd say, just off the cuff, 155.
And is that the high end or the mid-range that you would be proposing?
That is the starting salary.
Okay, all right. Other thoughts from board members?
Well, this is Ben. I, you know, I'm not, I'm glad Webb has researched the numbers. And, you know, I guess I'm comfortable with that. But I think the standards that Webb laid out, I'm comfortable with. If 155 is in fact the right number for that, to put us, you know, sort of in that leadership position. But again, we're going to have high expectations for that person. For, you know, sort of putting them in that position, we're going to have really high expectations for them today.
So with Webb suggesting 155 as a starting, are we not going to have a range? Is it just going to say starting salary of 155?
This is Renee. I would suggest, I understand Webb's point, I would suggest your range be like 140 to 165. That would give you a range with 155 right there in the middle.
That, that makes sense to me.
I like that better, you know, having a range versus an actual starting salary, but have his, have his number in the middle somewhere. I could go with that.
It definitely works for us.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I just want to make one observation about the, about that salary. Whatever you publish as the top end, somebody who's highly experienced is going to be wondering why he's not going to get that if y'all aren't prepared to pay that. You can, if you publish a range, that gives you some flexibility to work anywhere within that range in terms of what you offer to the person. So the higher the outside limit of that is, the more likely you're going to be negotiating in that area with somebody who's highly experienced, if you, if you have a candidate like that. So, you know, if the idea is that you might be in a position to pay 155 for the kind of candidate you're looking for, I would be, I would recommend that you put closer to, that that be closer to the high end of the range so that you still have some room to negotiate.
And with that being said, I just want to understand one thing. Okay, the manager is not on a pay and classification scale. They're all, they're a contract employee, and what are we talking about when we say a range? Are we talking about a hiring range? Or are we talking about a range that you expect? I'm getting a little bit confused because, to me, 145 to 160, I'm fine with as a hiring range.
And that's what it was. That's what my suggestion was, Webb.
Okay, okay, I understand that. I mean, I just want to make sure that, because that means somebody, I don't want to leave it commiserate with experience and education because you're going to miss a lot of people. I want to make sure that if we say 145 to 160, if somebody comes in and says, okay, I'll do it for 160, that means we're committing to 160 if that's the person we want. If it's, but, I mean, I don't want to say 160 if we're not really committed to hiring somebody at that.
And that's my point.
Right, right, exactly. And I'm fine with 145 to 160 as a hiring range.
Yeah, it was a hiring range. They're not on pay and class study, they're not in that same thing. This is a employee, strictly employed by the board.
Correct.
It doesn't, does not have anything to do with a salary study or anything like that.
Commissioner Sears, you have any comments?
I'm fine with the starting, the starting point. I think if we're shooting for the best of the best and we're shooting to achieve something that we've all put high standards on, it may be a higher number than that. That's why I'm not, wasn't worried about Webb's 155 number. But in a range, fine, and if we find that exceptional person, you know, maybe we talk about more at that particular point. But I agree with that range starting out.
Okay, thank you. Kevin, I think you'd already said you were, you were okay with that.
With the range that was proposed by Commissioner Cahoon, yes, I agree with that. Thank you.
Okay. Steve, does that, does that work?
I have everything I need to proceed at this point. Yes, sir.
Okay. So Steve, you don't have any follow-up questions for us?
No, sir, I don't.
Board members, do we have?
I have one, I mean, it may not be appropriate, and Steve, please tell me if it's not appropriate. But obviously, I've seen the contract for the Duck manager, and when Duck was looking for somebody, what were, what was their hiring range?
95 to 130.
Okay.
And with the full salary range being 95 to 155.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, again, they're about, you know, a third to a quarter of your size, too.
All right, board, are we all set? Sounds like we are.
All right. Well, like I promised, we'll have the job ad to you all by Monday and by close of business on Monday, and we'll get your feedback, and we'll get everything kicked off by the first of February.
All right, very good. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you all so much. Very helpful.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, board. The next item on our agenda is the board of commissioners' agenda, and I'll ask if anybody has anything for us today.
I do.
Okay, thank you, Webb. What do you got?
Just one quick thing. We received a letter for the president from old Nag's Head place, and we discussed it just briefly at our last meeting. And I wonder if that's gone anywhere or done anything, or are we just not doing anything?
Greg, do you have any follow-up to that?
Right. We'll do some additional follow-up from staff. Right, because at this point, originally, it was myself, Andy Garman, David Ryan. We had met out there on site. David prepared some information for their, for their, for their homeowners association. And certainly, we indicated to them that, you know, if there's some level of cost sharing, that that's a, that's an easier-type project to take to the board. I think the letter they prepared certainly was, the cost sharing seemed to be pretty low on the, on the owner's side and very high on the town's side. And I think now it's that Andy and David and I just need to get back together and I think draft a additional response back to them that, you know, the board has seen this. They received your letter, but certainly have concerns about what these overall cost implications are. And we'll, we'll try to hone in on that with them.
Yeah, I guess I was, I think, if I'm not mistaken, and I do not have it before me, but the letter was to us, the board.
Yes.
And it was a strongly worded letter, in my opinion, from the standpoint of you will, and you will, and you will. And in no way has the board accepted any of that. And I don't know unless we go through point by point what we need to do, but I think the board definitively needs to respond at some level, whether it's a meeting or whether it's a letter. But the letter was to us, and I think we need, as a board, respond to that letter. That, and I can tell you my feelings, but my feelings don't mean anything right now. But I don't see how much of what was presented fits on our priority list, and I sure didn't see really any. and I sure didn't see really any cost sharings.
Webb, I just wanted to comment real quick. I pulled the letter up. The letter was to Greg, the email was to Greg, and copied to the board. But I agree that the letter or the email and letter were dated January the 5th. So some timely replies to Mr. Benner and his board, I think, is appropriate. And, but he is very demanding in his items that he's listed here.
Okay, well, then, fine. We don't, I mean, I apologize. Thanks, Kevin, for doing that. Then, if it's not right now a board issue, then I just would like an update from staff at next meeting or whenever, of how we've addressed the situation in old Nag's Head Place.
I will do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Webb. Other commissioners?
No, I'm good.
All right, hearing none. I don't have anything on the mayor's agenda, so that would bring us to any other business that needs to come before the board today. Hearing none, then the last item on our agenda would be to, and I believe for today, will be for us to recess to a meeting on January 27th. And I believe, tentatively, we had said that that would be at 9:00 a.m. for discussing beach nourishment.
I moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to recess the meeting to January 27th at 9:00 a.m. Madam Clerk, will you poll the board, please?
Okay, Commissioner Brinkley, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Aye.
Commissioner Renee Cahoon?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sears?
Aye.
And Mayor Cahoon?
Aye.
Thank you.